I know we wanted to do a meeting at this location back in November and we couldn't at the time because of COVID. And it's it's nice that we've at least come this far and things have developed and we can be here in person together. Uh, we also have an audience online as um with, I can't see the number of participants now, but um as well as here in uh in person. I'm going to go through a few just general updates about what's going on. I'm really going to try to focus it around uh its relevancy for the Pappy Valley Branson 40 drive area. Um, and I'll try to, I know I've gone over some of this stuff in previous meetings. Um, so I'll try to get through it pretty quickly. I'm going to talk generally speaking about infrastructure for the first few bullet points here. Transportation, what's going on with Highway one so-called drive, the Harbor Bridge, then I'll talk about internet. Uh, a little bit. So the broadband funding coming down the pipe, um revisions to our cell tower ordinance, new generator rules. Some changes for um the general plan and zoning code with the sustainability update and how that'll affect the area specifically for some of the agricultural zoning, which is the predominance of uh Branson 40 drive and Happy Valley Road.
That notice up there. I don't know if it's from Jamie or from you.
Okay, sorry, just uh. Where's my mouse there? One second. I'm I'm trying to. You think it'd be that easy? I don't know why. Hold on a second. Why? There we go. Okay. I'm good. Got it. All right. All right. So whereas I talk, I'll talk a little bit about the sustainability update and what that means for zoning in the area. Um, just what a few things that'll be on your June ballot, believe it or not, you'll be getting a ballot in the mail here at the beginning of May. Uh, I think it's about May ninth, the ballots go out. Um, and then I'll finish with some discussions of what's going on around fire prevention. Uh, countywide updates on the Branson 40 uh Fire District, uh as well as the code compliance case of fifty-two fifty-two Branson forty. I think I'll get through this pretty quick. I'm plenty of time for questions and answers and anything that anyone wants to talk about. Um, so you guys are all pretty lucky here on uh in Happy Valley Branson 40 drive to avoid most of the traffic in the county, but on this is just a warning that um. The phase one of the highway highway one auxiliary lane bus on shoulder project is anticipated to begin work this summer. Um, so that'll be from SoCal Drive to Forty First Avenue. Uh, that's really the same as what happened with um around Morrissey there, that auxiliary entry exit lane. Um, that's fully funded. Well, as I said, anticipated to start this summer, phase two of that, well, as in from forty-first to State Park Drive is anticipated to start the next year, twenty twenty-three. And then uh we're currently in environmental phase uh doing the the review for phase three, which is from State Park Drive to Freedom Boulevard. Uh, for those of you who drive it, um, you know, Freedom Boulevard is really that choke point where it goes from three lanes down to two lanes. And so. Um, the goal is if we can get auxiliary lanes all the way to there, um, we should be able to really that, especially with that last segment will relieve the majority of the congestion that we see today. Um, we're really looking at this as a multimodal project. As I said, the auxiliary lanes will also be bus on shoulder lanes. I will be applying for funding for four new electric buses. Uh, they'll be able to run in those lanes. We're going to try to get more express service going between Watsonville and Santa Cruz. And really see it, uh, you know, look at leveraging Highway one as a zero emissions transit corridor as well. But you can see with those crossings over it um are also the bike and pedestrian bridges we're looking at putting in. So one would go over Shanticleer. Um, another uh where we're improving the Capitola Avenue Bridge to put wider sidewalks and bike lanes in there. Uh, there's a Mar Vista Bike Pet Overcrossing and two rail um rail trail over crossings in the third segment. And there's just a general view of what it will look like as around the Capitola Avenue Crossing. And then uh also slated to get started this summer is the SoCal Drive buffered bike lane and congestion mitigation project. You've given on SoCal Drive, you know, those lights are not really very well timed. Um, and the traffic can be just as bad on SoCal Drive as Highway one. Um, so we're aiming to address that. Um, by getting all the lot, the lights actually turning them into adaptive traffic signals. So they'll be able to talk to each other. They'll be able to know. Uh, adjust how long uh each phase is green, depending on where there's more the direction of traffic. They'll also be able to talk to the buses and um change uh sooner if there's a bus waiting. Um, so that'll all help get traffic moving better through this five-mile segment, um, really from about Harbor High School to State Park Drive and Aptos. Um, it'll involve resurfacing. Um, it'll also involve a lot of sidewalk gap closures, so making the whole area better for pedestrians, uh including ninety-four new uh ADA ramp upgrades. Um, and a total of ten miles of continuous protected buffered bike lanes. So I mean, it's five-mile projects. That's really both sides of of it having buffered or protected bike lanes. And again, that's slated to start construction this summer as well. It won't be, we don't anticipate it having to actually stop traffic very much. Um, because it other than the resurfacing, um, that should be pretty quick. Um, so most of the intensive work will just be around fixing the sidewalks. Nevertheless, uh, it will be the same timing uh roughly as the highway. And then as if that wasn't enough, uh, the city is planning a Murray Street Bridge retrofit also to start this summer. This is with the Harbor Bridge. Um, so yeah, this is kind of the perfect storm uh as far as all three major north-south routes in the county. Um, I have raised the alarm, asked them if they couldn't delay at least the Murray Street Bridge project. Um, they tell me that they're working, the both county and city public works are all working together nicely and are going to time the work. And um nevertheless, um, I I wouldn't try to drive too much this summer if you can avoid it. Okay, um, let's talk a little bit about about internet access. That's uh always a big issue out here where I know internet access is not always the greatest. So the Board of Supervisors, we allocated five hundred thousand dollars uh from our American Rescue Plan Act uh funds specifically for improving broadband access. Um, and the fastest way that we can put that money to work, getting better access to folks um is working, we we had an RFP process. Uh, and we selected Cruz IO's um plan, which is basically to put in these wireless hotspots. Um, which uh allow people to connect to high-speed internet that way. That was just, we can get those out real quickly. They were already doing that program. They started during COVID. Uh, particularly in the Paharo Valley area. So this is really an expansion of that program. We were able to get it going pretty quick. We've looked at a number of spots throughout the county and and in the first district. The first four in the first district are going to be at the Live Oak School, specifically with the Live Oak School District and um their four schools, Shoreline, Del Mar. Uh, Green Acres and and Live Oak Elementary. Uh, we are looking at looking at some spots around here as well that are up on some of the ridge lines. Um, the the trick with the um with this wireless thing is you do have to have line of sight to one of the ridge lines to make it work. So we'll continue to look for opportunities around that to get to get better internet access here into this valley. Um, the county is also slated to receive over ten million dollars in state funding for last mile broadband high-speed internet. It's a pretty significant amount of money and we're working on a broadband master plan dot make sure we know, okay, where's the highest level of need? Where are the most people? How can we deploy that money as efficiently as possible to get as many people connected to high-speed internet as possible? In addition to that, there is going to be some state money and federal money for the middle mile project. So last mile is actually getting to what connects to your home. Middle mile is what gets to kind of a distribution point. Um, you know, say like here at the elementary school and then uh going out to your home through here would be the last mile. So that funding is still being worked out. Your uh, if you want to lobby for more uh middle mile funding for Happy Valley, that you can email middlemile@state.ca.gov. Uh, we're also looking to get people better connected with an update to our wireless ordinance. Um, it has been pretty slow going in general to get new cell towers installed in our county. Um, and so we're updating the ordinance. The next uh public hearing on this will be May tenth at the Board of Supervisors meeting. Um, and you know, the the old ordinance is from two thousand and three and in in staff zone where it's in desperate need of an update. The biggest change will be a transition um from discretionary permitting process to a ministerial one uh that we're really going to try to get done in sixty days will be these shot clocks that ensure that. Um, these projects can get done in sixty days. Um, and any uh denial of applications really has to be based on substantial written evidence rather than environmental or health uh concerns. Um, and also as part of that ordinance will be requiring a seventy-two-hour uh backup power requirement. So that, you know, of course, in case of these public safety power shut-offs that PG&E has been doing or uh fire or anything else, um, that the cell service remains available. Okay, um, also kind of in line there, the uh we the county, we did approve new rules for generators. Basically, it reduced the setback requirements from forty-five to as much as seventy-five feet, in some cases more to the twenty-five to forty-five foot range. So that, we hope that makes it a lot easier for people to put in these emergency generators. Is it sort of to balance the interests of everyone? Um, that we did, even though the generators can be a little louder and therefore a little closer to the property line, we are limiting operation from seven AM to ten PM. Uh, with the exceptions for medical need, of course. Um, these new rules are in effect now. Uh, they went into effect in February and you please uh take advantage of of them and we're happy to help. The sustainability update. Okay, so the county, we are in the process of essentially the largest change to our general plan and county code in twenty-five years. Um, it's pretty significant. Um, it largely focuses on the urban, the what's in the urban services line area, which you can see here. Um, you know, the county is in many effects, the largest city in even even in the county, um, in that this whole area is essentially urban. And and we have really more residents living in the unincorporated area than in any specific city in the county. Um, so this, the the sustainability update looks at ways to basically facilitate more infill development. Uh, with some new zoning types like residential flex or medical flex. Um, we've also also creating design guidelines um that will make it easier to show, hey, what consistent style we want to see uh develop in in town. Um, and there'll be one or two specific rezonings around Thurber Lane and SoCal Drive, you know, that big kind of pumpkin patch area there by across from Wells Fargo. Um, and on Portola Drive, some old um sort of auto-focused businesses there that would be rezoned for housing. How it relates to Happy Valley and Branson forty um is really specifically around what we're um proposing to allow. Again, this is all in draft phase and it won't come before the Board of Supervisors for finalization till this fall. Um, but what we're proposing for agricultural within agricultural use districts. And what you see here on the right is um a zoning map showing Branson 40 Drive, Happy Valley Road. Most of the parcels around here are zoned agriculture. Um, and so we're trying to make it easier for agricultural businesses to adapt, stay um competitive in the twenty-first century and really to keep that farmland in production. Um, so we're proposing to allow more agritourism and education, farm stay, home stay programs, produce stands, wineries, breweries, distilleries. Uh, events, including weddings with a specific permit, um agricultural processing facilities and farm worker housings to name uh some of the highlights there. So I think that is how it's most relevant to this area. Uh, just a few mentions, or as I mentioned, you'll be getting a a ballot here and just a little under a a month now. Um, there'll be a few things that'll be on that. There's measure B, uh, which is a proposal to increase the transient occupancy tax. Uh, that is the tax that hotel visitors pay when they stay at a ho- a hotel, obviously, or an Airbnb or VRBO or other short-term vacation rental. Um, right now it's at eleven percent. Other neighboring counties like Monterey are charging twelve percent, so the proposals to increase it to twelve percent for hotels. And fourteen percent for um for short-term rentals like Airbnb and VRBO. That's just because uh they short-term rentals never paid. Development impact fees, the way hotels have, they obviously do have an impact on neighborhoods. Um, and they also take a lot more county overhead to manage. You know, we have in the neighborhood of ten hotels countywide and and thousands of short-term vacation rentals. So it's a lot more work. Um, so that'll be for you to decide whether or not we increase that and it could could raise about two million dollars per year uh to go for essential county services. Um, also on the ballot will be measure C, a single-use cup tax. The goal here is really to cut down on single-use cup waste. Um, the Buena Vista landfill is our only landfill left in the uh, well, the the city has Dimmell Lane, but dim. The Buena Vista landfill is really the largest camp, the only landfill uh facility left in the county and it's, we estimate about eight years away from being full. So we're trying to just reduce waste as much as possible. Cups, single-use cups take up a big uh percentage of that. Um, and so we've proposed to charge a twenty-five cent cup fee on um cups. And then this tax would allow half of that to go to the county to for environmental programs. Um, to, you know, i- improve water quality, public health, education and other services related to to waste reduction. We are also looking at other, I mean, it's it's unrelated to this measure, um, but we are going to have to look at ways to raise funds to build a transfer station at Buena Vista landfill. Uh, as well as a composting facility there to, um, as you guys probably know, um, you can output compost in your green waste bins. Um, we don't, but we don't have a composting facility here in this county at this time, so it's all going to Marina. We'd like to change that. Um, and finally, measure D, the Greenway Initiative was qualified uh by voters with um with around twelve thousand signatures. And if approved, this measure would change the county's general plan to include the creation of a multipurpose trail on the Santa Cruz Branch Line Rail Corridor. Happy to get into the details of that if if anyone has questions. All right, um, finally, countywide uh fire prevention. Um, I think, you know, one of the biggest success stories of the last year in terms of fire prevention is all of the new firewise groups that we've seen. Uh, including two right here in the Happy Valley area, the uh B forty Firewise Charlie and the Happy Valley Firewise Community. Um, I think a big shout out to Chris Norton, uh, if he's on the line for helping to organize those. And uh, we, that's part of the support the county has given towards that is fifty thousand dollars in funding, which then the Fire Safe Council was able to leverage and toward towards another hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars with the funding of full-time staffing. Um, for uh organized fuel reduction and the Firewise community effort. Um, for those of you who are not familiar, Firewise is really a way for you and your neighbors to get together, identify uh major risks around your neighborhood. Opportunities for fuel reduction and then to begin working towards achieving that. And once you had that level of organization, it really makes you eligible for, um, it it makes it a lot easier to apply for grant funding to bring in more outside resources to help you get the job done. Fourteen new Firewise communities formed last year. That's more than a doubling uh that we had from the year before. Also underway is the Summit Shaded Fuel Break. Um, the Resource Conservation District has over half a million dollars. Uh, they were awarded from Cal Fire to do. And it is applying for permits for all five point seven miles from Highway seventeen uh and Summit Road out to Mount Bachi, which is pass where SoCal San Jose is. Um, they did a trial run of this last year. You can see the before and after there. Um, and are going to be starting the next section, which is should be a little uh over half of it, two point six miles um this, starting this summer. Although they're going out for permits for the whole thing. Um, and it's a great example of a a regional project um that, you know, could potentially be modeled on a it. A similar project uh for this valley. And then finally, we do anticipate getting three new fire cameras installed before this fire season starts. One at Silver Mountain Winery up at the summit, one at Watsonville Airport and one at uh the Dream Inn in Santa Cruz is to really improve our early warning system when it comes to fire in the mountains. Uh, I'll give a short update about Branson forty fire. Uh, they they did have their own meeting on Tuesday night um and continue to make X incredible progress um in terms of uh the future of the district. They've hired interim Fire Chief Nate Lackey, promoted from within. I think it's a a great choice. Uh, so he really knows the organization. Um, and are moving towards a reorganization involving merger with Scotts Valley Fire. Um, involving a couple steps, including um a formal application that they've submitted uh to LAFCO to officially start the reorganization process. Um, and with the goal of the Branson forty Fire District all along, of course, has been to keep Branson forty Fire Station open. Uh, with at least a two-member crew, even post-reorganization. Uh, and so I think they just decided on Tuesday night uh to. Hire a consultant that to look at a benefit assessment study of, you know, if it would take additional funds to ensure that level of staffing can be maintained at the uh Branson forty Fire Station in the future. Uh, there was uh may come up this evening, um, a volunteer wildland firefighter position that was sort of started and put on hold at the last meeting and. I'll just say, I mean, this is, it's, I think it's a great program in concept, given everything that's going on um for France, Branson forty Fire District right now. I think it's totally reasonable that this program was put on hold. Um, and uh, yeah, I, there's, they've they've really made incredible progress with everything on their plate uh before them right now. Last topic I'll cover is fifty-two fifty-two Branson forty code compliance case. Uh, as many as you know, there have been now two fires uh that have broken out at this address. Um, we have a signed stipulation order in place, which was fully executed by a hearing officer just at the end of last month. So this order addresses not only the fifty-two fifty-two Branson forty property, but also uh the one just above it. And it's claimed that the subject parcels are in violation of Santa Cruz County Code because of fire damaged structures, uh inoperable vehicles, occupied RVs, multiple accessory structures, shipping containers. Contractors store and a contractor's storage yard. So uh for correction of violations, the stipulation order basically provides these dates that go um throughout the year. The first one uh was at the end of March, which required payment of all enforcement costs that had been accrued uh by the beginning of March. Thankfully, the owner of the property has complied and paid that. So uh at least step one here has been checked off. Um, the next step uh at the end of this month, April, is to obtain final, uh, a final on building permit issued for the demolition of the burnt structure and remove all other fire damaged property. From the site. Also, at the end of April four twenty-nine, uh vacate and disconnect all recreational vehicles. By the end of May, remove all personal property materials at the property entrance driveway in front of the single-family dwelling. Submit all required application that uh fully addresses the violation cited. Uh, by the end of June, to remove all personal property and materials located uh along and behind the single-family home and uh schedule a visit with the code compliance investigator. Uh, by uh middle of October to complete all property cleanup and retain all required final inspections and approval, including clearing of all holds. And to per pay the remaining civil penalties if compliance is not met. Um, so really each one of these uh is a check on our progress here. Um, I have discussed with county council whether we can do more than this. Um, with the stipulation in order, we kind of have a schedule laid out. Um, but if any new incidents do occur on the property, uh, we can move to um a uh public nuisance uh case pretty much immediately if needed. That's all I have in the way of a presentation tonight and um now I'm happy to answer any questions that uh you guys have. And I'll start here with folks. In the live audience, um, I'm just going to, give me a second. Just stop if I can find a mouse here. Anyway, um, I'll skip that and just go to question. So, yeah. Um, and we do, we do ask, if you're here in the live audience, please speak into the mic. The reason for that is that it's the primary way way that the live audience is going to hear you. They're not going to be able to hear, or sorry, the um, the audience that is online is going to hear you. Uh, they're not going to be able to hear you if you don't speak into the mic.
So before I hand the mic over, um, my, you can see Jamie, right?
Yep.
Jamie, can you hear us okay?
It was you that.
I was just hoping you could elaborate on what you meant by the next step of of a uh public nuisance. What what does that mean or what does that entail if in case it occurs at other places? I'm just curious.
Um, I mean, it basically means that we would require that they do, it just kind of accelerate the, uh, I mean, that would be taken in front of a judge to hear the case. And take kind of taking it out of code compliance's hand, which is, you know, going through that process I showed there. Um, so. Um, at that point, a judge could say, do this immediately, um, or, you know, pay these fines. And if they don't, then we'd have the ability to go in and. You know, the county could do it ourselves with our own abatement fund.
But it doesn't give you access to um vacate that person or the the repeat offender, I guess, if it was a repeat offender.
No, as far as forcing them to.
To vacate af- after a certain point, there's no.
Um, I mean, it's really addressing the issues that are the public nuisance rather than forcing them to leave their property. I mean, a big challenge we're dealing with here is, I mean, the California Constitution pretty much in protects private property rights, right? I mean, both um your ability to protect your own property as well as ensuring that everyone is has a right to due process. Um, you know, before their property can be taken away from them. Um, so the notice of violation would be a first step. If if that even fails, then we could put the property into receivership. Um, where basically say, okay, this is such a mess that the court hands it over to a receiver who then is responsible for cleaning up the property uh and selling it.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Hi, uh, my name's Grant Weisman. Um, I've got a question back to highways and byways. Are you aware of the uh state highway department's plan to eliminate all the driveways that uh have access to Highway seventeen and. So forth, things that, you know.
Yes.
Yeah.
Generally speaking, yeah, I mean, to try to, you know, prevent it from being a local road uh as much as possible with with those kind of access points, right? I mean, I know that there's, it, I think it's more of a long-term plan than anything that's happening immediately. But is there a specific concern you have?
Well, I'm, I've, I don't know when they're going to do this, but they do have the plan for the various driveways and so forth. But it also includes the uh Vine Hill Road at the top with the uh overpass or underpass, which will. Apparently, the idea is to allow uh southbound traffic on Highway seventeen to exit seventeen and get onto Vine Hill. Without having to deal with that center lane uh thing and, you know, which is obviously very dangerous and.
Right.
So forth.
Right.
But the the thing that really uh concerned me is that we are looking at turning uh. Well, Vine Hill Road and Mountain View and Branson forty drive into a part of the commuter way. Uh, which, you know, they they already are slightly, uh, not slightly, they're they're involved. Are you, you know, the commute hours. You see the people who who can make the transition from Southbound seventeen on Vine Hill, although, you know, it's tricky. And that kind of filters, filters the numbers down, but I'm I'm looking ahead to when, if they do this overpass, underpass thing. That then it'll just be, hey, I've got a shortcut here. I'm gonna power on down. I'm gonna see if I can beat my time down to, you know. Capitola or and then on down to Gilroy or wherever.
Yeah.
But I I'm just, I just wanted to bring this up to you. Maybe you could, if you could get some time, you could take a look at that. And uh and see if they're serious about this and and hopefully stress that, no, we don't want to turn Branson forty drive. None of these roads should be used uh as a commuter shortcut. And uh, which, you know, everybody with the Waze or whatever the app is. So uh, yeah, that's my concern. It's just that that is gonna happen.
Okay, well, I know it's not, uh, I don't think it's anywhere in the funding for the next three to five years that I've, that I'm aware of right now. Uh, happy to look into it and see, you know, what exactly the, where where we stand with that project. I mean, are you saying that it it'd be your preference not to see those improvements uh done? Because as you said, they would essentially make it lo- lower the the bar or lower the um. Whatever amount of effort needed to to get get off on Vine Hill Road and and try to do a new best time.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's, it's pretty nuts. I I happen to live up in the forty-six hundred block and it's one of the few straightaways on the on Branson forty drive. And um, and you know, even as it is now, uh, people who get onto Vine Hill and then connect to Branson forty drive. Thirty-five miles an hour, forget about it. It is sixty-five miles an hour. They're just nuts. And uh, I would hate to see that uh as a problem grow and, you know, there's just no room for it. So anyway, that was my one concern. And then I, number two is, have you been in touch with the Save Our Skies people here on. Happy Valley uh about the southern approach to San Francisco International Airport? Have you been working with them at all yet?
Yeah, I I have worked with them. Um, the big challenge we're, we have with the jet noise issue right now is that. Um, essentially, the the roundtable between the Santa Cruz, Santa Clara Roundtable was uh disbanded last, I believe it was in November. essentially the round table between the Santa Cruz, Santa Clara round table was disbanded last, I believe it was in November. So that really eliminated the primary avenue that as a local official, I had to be able to work with the FAA and give them direction on what we wanted to, to see done. So that essentially means that it's in our congressional's hands at this point. So Anna Schu and Congressman Panetta. I've written them both letters saying, my understanding is that an environmental impact report was done on a, a different approach route and that, that it will expire this year. And so if we want to see some action taken on it, it really needs to happen sooner rather than later. So I've written to both of our congressional representatives, asking them to take whatever action is possible. To, to provide some relief, just, you know, as you said, to this area in particular. The other, also just, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, at Anna Schu's request, to send a letter to congressional committee that's looking at new laws for the FAA to basically try to address these kinds of issues and get them to listen more to citizens when they have issues like this. So unfortunately, I, that's the best I can do to be directly to, to influence this issue because of the, the round table has gone away.
Is there any movement or interest in resurrecting?
It's not even just our place on the round table. The round table itself no longer exists. Yeah. So it's, would take a pretty huge lift to bring it back. I don't think that we could effectively do it. And lobby for a change to the flight path before this environmental impact report expires this year. I'm, my understanding is that sometime around June of this year. So the best course of action is really directly through our congressional representatives. You're welcome. If, hold, hold on, sir. I, I'm happy to give you the mic. Can everyone hear all right online? Yep. Okay, great.
Thank you. Yeah. I just wanted to ask him that you spoke to our congressional representative to see if in fact, how that response went. You said you wrote over to Congressman Panetta. I too wrote to him and he basically wrote back saying that it only affected 135 people. And that the FAA had pretty much put it up as it's a safety issue and so we're not going to be bothered anymore. So I'm just curious if you received any different information when you wrote?
I haven't received information saying that he's actively, that, that they'll be able to get the FAA to do anything else yet. I think that's why Congresswoman Schu is looking at new regulations for the FAA as a whole to try to improve the process from that angle. I'm happy to give them a call again and see where they stand with it. If there's any hope, we can get progress on this issue this year. Sure. Yeah. Again, sir, if you just speak into the mic, that way the online audience can hear you.
I mean, can you tell us what happened? I mean, the thing was been resolved, everything was going to change and then some backroom deal got made, something happened. I don't know what. I mean, it's like all of a sudden, poof, everything was gone. The round table's been disbanded. What, what happened?
What happened?
What are we going to do about it? Because it's affecting a lot of people. And it seems like some, some other interest has superseded ours.
Right. Well, what happened was in, in brief was, so before there, there was the round table, there was the select committee, right? And the select committee basically made the recommendations for how to change the flight path. What happened was at the end of putting that package of recommendations together, you could call it a poison pill was added, which was that it's all or nothing. You've got to take all these recommendations or nothing. And so what happened is the FAA did all the work analyzing alternatives. And basically we're like, well, we can meet most of the recommendations, but not all of them. And you said we had to meet all of them. So we can't do that. I guess we're not doing anything.
That's clearly the excuse.
Right.
That's not what happened. Well, I mean, I don't know what happened, but I know how politics works. Some other interest superseded ours. You know how politics work.
Well, I think the, the real challenge here is, is that from a local, and this is why the FAA won't work with any particular jurisdiction. Like, like, I mean, I've talked with the folks at the FAA, but why they say, look, you got to approach us as a region is because our interests might be different from Palo Alto's interest, might be different from Santa Clara's interest. And so in trying to form a, a new flight path that's best for the region, they really want to see that come out from as a regional recommendation from all those local entities. And so that's why they, they're, from their perspective, they did that to the best of their ability. They weren't able to because the requirement was that they meet all of them. All of those suggestions, which they couldn't, and why they didn't move forward. Now, as I said, my understanding is they actually did environmental impact report on the impacts of an updated flight path that would meet most of those recommendations. It's still available, but I don't.
My understanding is they never did an environmental impact report on the current one that they moved to. They, they slid by without doing the proper work.
Right.
And the whole point was to go back to the way it was before they incorrectly moved it. And now you're saying we can't move it back because we haven't done an environmental impact report on the new thing, even though the current thing.
It wasn't because they hadn't done an environmental impact report. Again, it was that dealing with the recommendations that saying that they couldn't essentially fulfill what the select committee asked them to do.
But that's the issue. I mean, the question is, do we have any elected officials who are going to represent? Because I have a feeling that everybody's just throwing up their hands and nobody's doing a damn thing.
Well, I mean, it's a federal agency and so ultimately the best representatives to make a change in it are our federal representatives.
I get that. We won't vote for them again. But you represent us also.
Yep.
And kind of like you made one phone call and gave up, but.
I mean, sure.
The letter that was written was actually to the committee that is reviewing the information with regard to the flight path and the noise that's being had. And the information was specifically provided to and included in the hearing committee. So the notes are on official record. That were, you know, provided to the congressman who sit on the committee as well. So, you know, in addition to speaking with the representatives, the, the supervisor on behalf of the county, you know, included, you know, the concerns that have been raised, the experiences that he has, you know, had visiting community members' homes, as well as, you know, describing exactly what was heard from like, I can't, I don't want to speak too far, but.
Doesn't make any sense.
Sorry.
The question is, is this a priority or do you not give a damn?
I think it's, it's more, how much can I affect the situation, right? With, with, you know, I have to look at investment of my time versus all the other issues in the town. I'm not saying it's not important. It's more, I don't think that I can do all that much about it. I've done what I, what is in my ability. You know, I've essentially provided testimony to the congressional committee that's looking at this, that can make the rule changes. You know, but otherwise I don't know what else I can do.
Okay. I'll put you down if I don't care.
Well, no, it's fine. I mean, sir, it's not that I, it's not that I don't care. It's just that it's not, it's not a county agency. I don't have direct control over it.
You write another letter, make another phone call.
Yeah, sure.
A little more.
Sure. I'm, I'm happy to.
Thank you.
Any other questions from our in-person audience here? Becky? Sure.
Thank you. I arrived a little late, so I'm not sure if you talked about this regarding the Brant 40 fire reorganization effort. But what is the timeline for the voters here being given the the option to pay a new parcel tax to keep the fire station open? Chief Samantha Sweden said that it could be like $1,000 a year per parcel. I know that, that the Brant 40 Fire Board did vote to begin that process of, of getting the study done. When will that study be done? And what alternatives to funding this station at possibly $1,000 a parcel per year will be included in that analysis?
Those are all great questions. The Fire District is not directly under, within my jurisdiction either. They're independent. And so I don't know the details that, or the answers to those questions. You're welcome to speak with Pat O'Connell. I've, I mean, after the meeting. And President O'Connell of the Brant 40 Fire District, and I'm sure he can, you know, he'll do his best to answer your questions. But, you know, again, Brant 40 Fire District had a meeting Tuesday night. And so I think really that's the best way to advocate for any, you know, improvements, information or changes to the process that you'd like to see around a new assessment, the reorganization, et cetera.
Okay. I do, I do see that Don Jarvis and Joe Serrano are on, so hopefully they'll talk with us a little more about that and any possibility of having a a pilot program here to include a, a wildland fire volunteers and hand crew to do vegetation management in the Brant 40 area. I hope they'll talk about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Becky. Okay. If we have no more questions at the moment here, we'll go to the online audience. And Jamie, if you could go ahead and call, if, if you're online, go ahead and use the reactions button to raise your hand and that'll put you in the queue. And we'll call on people in order that they've raised their hand. And Jamie, I think you've got a better view of the online audience. If you want to go ahead and call on people. And the sound is not working from my computer. Do you want to just turn it up on yours?
Oh, sure.
Supervisor, I currently do not have.
One second, Jamie. We can't hear you yet. Here, there we go.
How about now?
Great.
We currently do not have any questions in the chat or raised hands. I did give the same directions in the chat. If you'd like to ask a question in the online audience, please press the reactions button and then select raise hand. And I will also change the settings to allow you to unmute in case that, that helps anyone to just directly unmute.
Okay, yeah. If any of you have questions in the audience too, I'd be happy to take those. Sure.
So we're going back to the.
Yeah. What, I mean, whatever, whatever order people want to keep the meeting going. Becky, I think here and then, or did it was, someone else have a first question before we go to seconds?
Yeah.
Just again.
My name is Don Medina. It's a little off your agenda. You held a town home or meeting at the SoCal Library not long ago about Home Key Project. That slated, or at least proposed for Park Avenue and Cabrillo College Drive. I've been a longtime resident of the county. I've lived at Subic Lane, Park Place Townhouses, which are directly across from the post-proposed development for 37 years. Currently I'm serving as the board president there. Not that that many means anything, except I understand how difficult it can be. No thanks from the community to try to get things through. And having been said, I haven't been in the county a long time and at that location for a long time. I've seen a lot of changes. With redevelopment, they took out all parking and put in sidewalks internally on Park Avenue, which expedited coming and going to the freeway for places like Cabrillo. But eliminated a lot of existing parking, which was overflow for our community. Now you probably are aware that PUDs, planned unit developments like Subic Lane and Lindsay Lane, which is property right next to this proposed development, were underparked during the eighties because of whatever planning issues there were. And also it was very expensive for builders to provide park. My understanding is that this, this proposed development doesn't have any requirements for parking. One third parking place per unit is a joke and won't work. And I know people say there's no park, they, these people will not need parking because they won't have vehicles. But my understanding from what I've read you say, from what I've read you, you, you propose that these people will be part of our community living there at some length, hoping to prosper, possibly go to Cabrillo, get good jobs. Well, with that typically comes transportation. So unless they're not allowed to have motorcycles and cars and SUVs and motorhomes, then this proposal really won't work on that level at all. Now, a lot of people say, oh, let them park at Subic Lane or in the the surrounding community. Now, that's already overflow for all the underparked PUDs that exist now. Okay. So this is just one issue that I have with my, my concerns about this. And I don't see that improving unless the developer were to buy the property backs, which I understand is a possibility with the assembly and state bills at a later date, possibly buy more land and then supply parking for these units. Now that I hope that's not the case, because if that's the case, you just leapfrogged all of the things that we as builders, by the way, I'm a carpenter. Here, Carl is too, and, and builder. And I am not anti-growth and I'm not pro-growth. I like to see projects and developments taken on a one-by-one basis. Living in the county a long time, as a kid, I saw a nuclear power plant denied for Davenport. Okay. Later, Seascape put into development. I watched Ralph Sanson and the, and the attorney for, for Seascape at Cabrillo College, a much larger venue than this. You know, with the supervisors chiming in. Now that, that proposal went through. Later, when I was in high school, taking civics classes, I went to see Stebbins, the herpetologist from Berkeley, talk about the salamanders that he had studied as a young man, which became the long-toed salamander that's so famous here. It was a proposed development for motorhomes or, or mobile homes out on San Andreas Road. Also along the freeway there at Rob Roy, which is the Freedom Exit. Today you can still see the evidence of the work that they did in the salamander protection zone. These, these are kind of things that supervisors deal with all the time, sometimes to my, to my sense, less successfully. Now, that particular one, people say, well, you won't be able to build on the salamanders. Well, that's not true. In the eighties, I built a home on Loma Prieta in the salamanders. With an expensive foundation, which was a pole house. It was the only way to get the project through. And we were able to do that with environmental study. Now, to my knowledge, this project has leapfrogged all of these, all of these procedures. And I'm okay with that. In fact, I support this assembly bill because as a builder, I know how contentious things can be and how difficult it is to move the ball. However, if you're going to skip the review process, seek one. And you don't have to by law. You, you have the option. You specifically as a supervisor have the option. Now, in skipping it, that means that you and your staff need to do the due diligence to make sure this is a project that fits the property and fits the community. A nearly 60-foot structure, nine feet from a, a property line with a two-foot story structure next door is a very difficult thing for the community. As I said, the parking, there are many issues and I know that there, you know, we'll get to them and possibly things can be redesigned. But it just seems to me that, you know, we talk about transparency and I've heard from the supervisor category here, that, you know, there's a lot of misinformation going around. Well, if you get blindsided, which I feel, you know, I feel like I'm a little overt. I feel like I was blindsided. I mean, I do sit on the board of the homeowners association and I know I don't have any, just as you don't have any pull with the FAA. But I can vote, you know, for a supervisor in my district. And I have followed this stuff for a long time. I mean, I've gone to supervisors' meetings with hopes of having outcomes. And I just feel that Home Key, I can't, I can't get an individual. I know there's somebody who's supposed to respond to our, our letters. And I've written letters. I wrote one to you. I can't find the pinch point. I don't, I can't find the spot where if, if I wanted to make an objection about any aspect of this, that I can really be heard. And it's kind of what I was hearing about, you know, this over, this overflight stuff. I don't like to get emotional about things. I think that in general, being on a board, if you get emotional, you've lost the battle because now you're not hearing. And I just, I just feel really frustrated. I'm, I support moderate income housing, low income housing and transitional housing. And I know as a state and as a community, we have let our certain populations down, starting with Ronald, with Ronald Reagan closing state mental institutions.
Sure.
And that's the first time it was on my radar in my life. And since then, we haven't done a whole lot better.
Yeah.
And I, so I support the expedited way we're going about it. But this particular project does not fit the project. Doesn't, it doesn't fit the scheme if, if we are to embrace this project and the people who live there, it needs to reflect the community. A four-story structure in a two-story neighborhood with no parking and balconies. It, it's, it's, it's kind of off the charts. So I'm sorry if I've taken too much time, but these are my concerns. And I, since I missed your earlier meeting, I wanted to, I wanted to show up and at least say a few words.
Yeah.
So that's what I have to say.
Thank you for.
Sure. Thank, thank you for sharing your concerns. Thank you for being on a board in your community and for, for volunteering for that. And
Well, when you're there 37 years, you get a real.
Yeah. I understand. You might get some, some pushes to join. I understand. You might get some, some pushes to join. So, let's see. First of all, I, we have not had any update on the Park Avenue project. If there were, I would certainly share it with you. And while the moment I hear anything, and if, if the project does move forward, we've scheduled a tentative date in early May that we could have a community meeting. And again, we'll, we'll get that out there as soon as we know more. I mean, I certainly, you know, I hear your concerns about various concerns. I mean, to the parking issue, you're right that the, under state code, the building's not required to have any parking whatsoever.
That's true.
Right, and that's why the, you know, I've spoken with the developer about this, you know. So the 12 parking spaces that are provided are one step in, at least in the right direction rather than zero, right? The other, the other thing is, though, I mean, when I went to visit the property and the commercial properties right next to it, I mean, there, let's just say there was ample parking in the middle of the day. He's talked about allocating at least four of those spots for resident parking full-time, and then making the whole parking lot available for resident parking at night, right? So after 6:00 PM, for example. So it's not like, I don't, I don't think that they're, you know, we're gonna be pushing everyone onto Subec Lane or other spots, because- Right, great. It's a private, private road.
There's plenty of parking for both Subic and Lindsay.
Right.
And it may not be legal.
Sir, sir, it just, I don't want to get back and, back and forth, only because then the online audience won't be able to hear what you say. So, you know, and I totally hear the concerns about proximity to the properties to the north. You know, again, I, in speaking with the developer, you're saying it was gonna move the, the road to the parking to the north, and the fire access to the north to move it, you know, so the building instead of eight feet away from the north property line would be 20 feet, 24 feet from the property line. So, I mean, these are all details that could be addressed, you know, if the, if the project moves forward. You know, I'll look at our, what ability we do have to address the environmental side of it as you, as you raise. You said, said that was optional. I'll look at what we could do with staff to address these concerns about the red-legged frogs and other sensitive receptors in this habitat. But obviously, I mean, well, we'll see, may, may or may not be the end of it, depending on what we hear about the funding. But we'll definitely, if it does keep moving forward, we'll definitely have more meetings on it in the future.
Can I just add one thing? I was just checking the Project Home Key website, just to see if any awards have happened, because I check often. And on the 11th of April, more money was awarded, but nothing in Santa Cruz.
Thank you for sharing that. Yeah, I've been checking too. But I guess Abigail, who's representative for Home Key, is so far, that's the representative we know of, has been in contact with you, has she shared with you ever as to, we thought originally, the community thought that there was like a deadline. Now we're realizing there's a number of deadlines maybe allocated to different locations throughout the county or whatever. I'm assuming now that that's what's happening. Are you privy to the next few deadlines that are coming up? Like, when are we looking for?
I wish I could say yes, but no. I mean, I was under the same impression that there was a 45-day deadline from the application point to, which would have put us at the middle of March, and clearly we're well past that.
Right.
So unfortunately, I, I mean, I guess the state's saying, well, it's our program and we'll let you know when we feel like it at this point, or when they get to it. But I don't know, I'm not familiar with any other deadlines. I heard, we'll know by the end of the month, but I've heard that before, so.
So you don't think Abigail would know either? We've tried to contact her, but she's not been reachable.
Yeah, I mean, our, no, all our staff at the county who's been working with HCD on this, they, I think that their response is, we'll let you know. Soon, we're working on it.
Got it. Okay.
Sorry, can't tell you more.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Jamie, is there anyone online who had a question?
I do not currently have anyone with their hand raised. Again. Again, if you'd like to, no, not currently. If you'd like to raise your hand, please press the reactions button. And to the online audience, you can also go ahead and unmute yourself if you'd like to speak.
Let's try to say something now.
Can you hear me now? I do not currently have anyone waiting to speak.
Go ahead, Becky.
Thank you.
Hard work.
I, I have a question following up on this gentleman's concern and a lot of others. Why can't that project, Home Key, be reduced in size? Just, that's just my question to fit in with the neighborhood. Why can't it be reduced? And is the developer coming in under the, what is it, SB 35 or whatever that really restricts and streamlines everything? So that wasn't why I wanted the microphone, but those questions came up to me while he was talking. Do you want to address those?
Sure. I, I mean, the prod, the application is for a specific number of units, right? Essentially, the state is looking at how much money they're giving for how many units would be able to be constructed, right? So I think if the projects awarded the money, it couldn't be reduced from 36 units to 24. For example, the actual arrangement of those units on the site might be able to be changed, but the number of units could not.
So the number of units is determining, has been determined to get the best chance of getting the money? Is that what you're saying?
I'm just saying that is, that is the part of the application that probably is the, is inflexible.
And, and the application could not be amended to have a smaller number of units? Maybe with a specialty group that would be favorable for funding with the state? It seems like the, the whole thing is the money, and the, the public are being left out in the cold with, you know, really our concerns. The focus is on getting the money, as I'm hearing it. So why can't it be changed?
Well, first of all, the focus is on trying to build housing.
Yes.
And it, yes, it's an application for state resources to build that housing. I mean, I, I the big question I have, to be perfectly honest, I mean, I, when I drove by Willowbrook, it, I mean, maybe it's not an official third story, but it, it's, looks like three stories to me, right? I mean, I think it's like a walk up in the middle, and there's balconies. And so I understand that there's, I mean, this, it's, it's meeting county height requirements, the, the current project, and it-
Well, I suppose, I suppose it would meet county requirements when they built the condos in Capitola above New Brighton Beach. But that was 50 years ago. I, can you tell me, and just off the top of your head, I mean, you've lived in the county a while now. Off the top of your head, can you tell me of another four-story residential in a two-story residential area that's been built in the last 30 years in SoCal Aptos area?
I, well, none stumping to mine, no.
Well, it's because they don't happen. And you may say that it's, it's, you may say it meets county code, but I mean, I think Carl here. And I, I have a 28 average height restriction for most of my structures in residential areas. This is more than double that. Depending on where you measure it from.
I think-
And it's taken from not the highest measurement, but the average measurement. And you have balconies, which, to my knowledge, and are there any other Home Keys being built with balconies? I'll bet there aren't. There's reasons for that. Fire reasons, noise and light reasons, and safety reasons. But I, I mean, if you eliminate the balconies, the project becomes better, I mean, for the community. I mean, it just does. I mean, light-wise, noise-wise, safety-wise, safety-wise. And I don't, once I, I don't, I don't want to labor, you know. What she says is true to a certain extent. I mean, we're looking to get money to house people, and I get that. It's just, I can't believe this is the best property, all things considered. You know, the location for traffic, which is a huge problem, it will, it will exacerbate. I know, I think you know it will. And that, that location's already bad with traffic. Add, basically, we got 36 units on three-quarters of an acre. That's very high density. Pretty hard to find that anywhere but a hotel. And I think, at least in my research, most Home Key projects are converted hotels. You have all the infrastructure, power, water, gas, all of those things are already existing on site, including parking. And those conversions, I think, probably pencil out better. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe, maybe I could be proven wrong. But this modular unit, once again, that doesn't even have local guys building it. Not that we care about that anymore, but, you know, it's, 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 it's really hard to see when we care so much about trying to keep the balance right. And I, I just, I'd like to see harmony. I mean, I heard or read, I think, in the Aptos Times, I believe it was the developer, maybe the developer's son, saying, pointing to the Blue Project in Aptos is a similar thing. Go and look at that. I looked at the pictures of that. I didn't go visit it. But it's not all, at all. It's not at all the same thing. It looks like the community. It's not as tall. And it's, it's really, I think, rent-restricted. It's not, it's not a transitional thing that we have, if I understand this project correctly.
This is not a transitional project. It's permanent housing.
In which case, the parking becomes a huge issue. So anyhow, thanks for your comments.
I can't for the life of me figure how building this in a creek bottom is the best place in Santa Cruz we have to build this. It's a creek bottom. How can we have these people living in a creek bottom? You know what the creek, you know there's a creek there?
I, I do, and it's not a creek bottom, it's a creek top.
A creek top, okay, a creek top. Why build it next to a creek?
I mean, there's actually, I mean, would you say, isn't all the other development along that creek that also along the creek, sir?
Yes, sir, what?
Isn't the Willowbrook Apartments along the creek? Isn't the home that's Subec Lane along the creek?
They're way above the creek. This is about, what, 10 feet from the, from where this is gonna be built to the bottom of, to where the creek is? The creek is right there. I live there. The creek's right there. Walk the creek. See where this is.
I, I don't know what the elevation is.
Well, I know one thing. Why, would you want to live there? Would you want to live where they're building them?
I don't think it's gonna negatively impact the neighborhood.
Would you want to live there? On this, where this, where the creek is running through there, and you're down in this hole, would you want to live in that spot?
It's not in a hole, sir. All right.
Would you want to live there?
I'm happy to, I'm, I'm happy to, I'm hap, look. The goal tonight, as I said, there will be future meetings on this project. And I'm happy to talk with all of you from the neighborhood after the public comment. I want to allow anyone else who has concerns related to Happy Valley to get those out now. And then, if those are done, we can bring the meeting to a close, and I'm happy to continue the dialogue with you. Okay? Sure.
Hi, my name's Carl Ray. I live in Happy Valley, and I know Donnie, I'm a builder myself. And I'm just listening to this conversation, and I'm struck by what I'm personally experiencing on my own property, trying to get an ADU built. And it, it, it's the polar opposite, right? Like, what I have to deal with, with your county and your, your planning department is putting up nothing but brick walls and obstacles to build a badly needed house, a little tiny house on a 12-acre property.
Yep.
I mean, it's, I, I'm familiar with county processing. I, I know the building inspectors. Built houses in the city and the county. And it, it's, I can't do it. I'm, I'm unable to get through it financially, emotionally. And I feel like the people in the planning department come at me like I'm a bad guy. Every time I go in and I ask a question, I feel like I'm, I'm doing something wrong, or I'm trying to sneak something by them. And it's just one layer of reports, consultants, fees, more things that I have to do. I can't even get through environmental health. And so I'm just giving up. I'm giving up. And then I hear about what Donnie's experiencing from some state-funded multimillion-dollar developer from out of town who's building, building boxes in a warehouse somewhere, and he's gonna ship them in and plop them into a creek next to this gentleman's home. And I just gotta say, how, how does this happen?
Yeah.
Like, how did we get here?
I, I hear you, right. It feels completely unfair, right? And, I mean, let me take the planning department issue, right? Yeah, I, I, it is one, one of my top priorities to improve the planning department.
Thank you.
And the challenge, we're dealing with like decades of institutional inertia, bad code, bad culture. It's a lot, there's a lot there. I wish I could made, have made more headway than that you'd have your ADU built, like-
I would love to talk to you, I would love to talk to you and your staff about my, my personal experience, because it, I mean, it's like a novel. It really is. It's, it brings, it, it brings emotion to me that I don't want. I'm a cancer survivor, and part of my, part of cancer is stress, right? And so I can't even really go there. I had to pay an architect to go talk to the county, thousands of dollars.
Yeah.
Because I can't do it. I just, I want to, you know, start hurting myself.
And if you have any specific recommendations that I can get my teeth around and make sure happen, happy to do it. So let's just, let's also just paint a big picture. We are, again, it's like, the county is, it's like a giant ship, right?
Right.
Takes a lot of turning to get a little movement.
Yeah.
But we are making progress in the right direction. One of the biggest things that's happened is we've combined planning and Public Works. So it's, I mean, now called the Community Development and Infrastructure Department. But we've put, so our former director of Public Works is now overseeing both departments, and Matt Machado. And he's got a real can-do attitude, and I think he's gonna make a big impact just on that culture. And some of the meetings that I've been with him in, trying to work with specific applicants like yourself, I, I do see a, a very different attitude in the way he is approaching things. And I think that he'll be, will be able to change the culture within the department. The other, the other goal with that is that actually you'll be able to go to the fourth floor. And I ran into some friends on the fourth floor, just as I was coming into work this morning, trying to build an ADU. And, you know, they had just talked to someone on the fourth floor, and we're headed down to the third floor to talk to environmental, to environmental health, right? And that's the whole problem today. It's like you said, you get bounced-
They're the gatekeeper.
You get, yes, yes, especially out here with septic. Yeah, but you get bounced all around the county building, and, you know, it's, he said, she said.
Yeah.
So with the combination of the departments and creating what we're calling Unified Permit Center, we're trying to get it down to, you have one point of contact that can help move you through the whole process, that there's days you can go in there, all, you basically can talk to everyone you need to, to get your plans in order that once, and then submitted, to move them through as quickly as possible. We're also gonna have accountability, because as you said, it's not fair that, you know, who knows how many days it'll take, right? We need to be like, look, 45 days or less. And if not, you have the right to get a private plan check. So that is actually a part of state law with the Permit Streamlining Act, that we're gonna make sure gets implemented, right? And that was another part of the conversation I was just having with the new director is, yeah, if, if we can't get through this backlog in time, and we have a big backlog right now, okay, let's get some private plan check onboard, so that we can clear out the backlog and start processing these in a timely way. So-
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's great. It's good. You know, I mean, I, I dealt with CSG, which is a outsourced plan-checking firm. And in a lot, in a lot of ways, I've seen that have its own set of issues with people that are looking at plans that don't live in our community, don't understand our local needs. And they, you know, I've seen, I've seen plans come back to my architects that I, that I deal with, with, with seven, eight, 10 pages of comments that are just, you know, just, just, okay, well, we gotta, hey, I gotta pay it, I gotta pay another professional to go through the 727 comments on a set of plans for a 400-square-foot ADU. And at, at 150 or $250 an hour to, to go back and resubmit and wait another four weeks for them, you know, maybe another round of comments to come out. You know, and it's just like, I think if we just lessen the, the hurdles
Yeah.
to get housing built in a responsible way, where it serves a community who we are, right? Like, it's gonna serve me. I, I, I'm a steward of my land. I love my property. I would never do anything to damage my property. And I get, but when I talk to environmental-
I feel like, you know, I'm, they think I'm gonna do something to damage the San Lorenzo watershed, you know? And I, I have no interest in doing that. I'm a surfer, I'm a fisherman, I'm a mountain guy, right? So don't come at me with all these restrictions and requirements, because you think that you're trying to save something that I'm not even close to or have any interest in damaging. Not to mention that I already have a perfectly functioning legal operating septic system on my property.
Right.
You know, like, that counts for nothing. They don't even want to look at that. They say, okay, well, sorry, the new code is this, you have to do this. And you have to go spend $8,000 with professional consultants to test your land to deter- And you have to go spend $8,000 with professional consultants to test your land to determine, to give us the information so that we can determine if you need a $30,000 system or an $80,000 system. I can't do it.
Yeah.
And so housing stops right there.
Right.
Instead, we're forced to deal with things like what Donnie's dealing with. You know, if we sprinkled the housing around the community a little better, we wouldn't have this dense
Makes less of an impact on everyone. So, so just to, again, because the online audience won't be able to hear what you're saying, sir. Yes, I totally hear you. I'm happy to, to discuss what specific recommendations you have. I know that lamp, the local area management plan in septic is a huge issue, especially the cost of the new system.
But that's one of, that's
One of, yes, right.
Thing in my head, yes.
Okay, yeah. And it is absolutely my top priority to remove some of those restrictions.
Like the, I mean, just lastly, I promise this is my last.
Well, again, if you could just speak into the mic.
So there's a state law that's been implemented that says it's, uh, in order to help ADUs, you know, help encourage people to build ADUs, they've lessened the fire sprinkler requirement. So if the house isn't required to have fire sprinklers, then the ADU is not required to have fire sprinklers. Well, great, you know, that's going to save people lots of money, tens of thousands of dollars. But in my particular case, because the ADU where, where I can build it, where it's a good spot, it's, it's, it's more than 300 feet away from where a fire truck could get. So the fire chief just says, sorry, you got to do fire sprinklers. You know, so it's like, okay, well, there's another 30 ground. And I get it, right? I, I mean, I understand and I kind of understand the need for fire sprinklers, not really sure that they are all that great. And I would be happy to put sprinklers on the roof, do other things to mitigate any kind of a fire getting out of my ADU. Keep the shrubs down and, and, you know, there's other ways to protect a building from catching on fire. I personally have fire sprinklers on the roof of my own house because I think that's the best way is protect your house from a fire coming in and also from your house burning out
Right.
rather than flooding the inside of your own house. So, you know, that's just another one. And I can, I can keep going.
Okay.
So we should talk or I maybe one
Yeah, happy to give you your card and, and work, and start working through these issues and
Let you know what I've been experiencing because it's, like you said, it's been tough.
I hear you. Okay. We'll continue the conversation.
Thank you.
Yeah, did you have another question, sir?
Yes, getting back to the 52 property. I heard rumors that they were making that there. Can you confirm or deny that? Is that part of your knowledge?
I can't confirm it. Um, you know, we with, with, sent a sheriff officer out with code compliance, you know, to really look for any illegal activity that was happening on the property that other than violations of the building and zoning code, which is the code compliance. We had sheriff's office there as well, ensure their safety, and also to look for other illegal activity like that, that, um, you know, could be brought into the case. And you're not able to find any evidence of that.
So my, my concern on that was that I didn't ever hear whether or not environmental health got called. Is that as to whether or not some reservoir or something up there could be going into the groundwater and affecting the people with private wells downstream from this property? Is that a possibility or anything that's been studied?
We've certainly discussed the property with environmental health. Um, and in their view, it's mostly code compliance is issue to deal with. I mean, they, Jamie, do you have anything that you want to add to on this?
Supervisor Cunningham, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, that's exactly right. When code compliance went out, they are, they're basically limited in scope to what was the original report. And they do have their eyes open to other things, but it's very important that if you have reason to believe that there's a violation, that you make a code complaint report, and I can certainly help you do that. That being said, however, we as a staff spoke directly to environmental health, to the director and to staff, and brought their attention to some of the concerns that we had heard verbally and asked them to be aware of that and to look into it. There was nothing sight, um, there was nothing observed on site by code compliance or the sheriff that led them to refer to code compliance. Uh, I'm sorry, to environmental health. And that is how that would work. If they saw something, they would certainly follow up about it. And they did not observe anything that they warranted a reference, a referral to environmental health. If you do think that there is a reason, please do make a report to code compliance and they will certainly investigate that specific report.
And we're happy to help you do that.
Absolutely. And supervisor, we do have an online speaker ready.
Okay, go ahead.
Sasha?
Hi, Manu. Uh, I live, uh, in Happy Valley and about 225 feet from the fire station there. I'm, you know, nervous about, um, insurance and being able to keep our insurance. We've been lucky so far. And, uh, you know, just wanted to know about fire wise, more about fire wise and, um, and, uh, also piggyback on what the gentleman before was talking about with the, with the, with the planning department, um, which I actually want to talk about first. So, um, I, I think that the planning department, uh, just, it does feel like a train wreck in there. And, um, it's sort of a vicious cycle because when you start getting, um, hassled by them or pushed back, or there's a element of no trust, like the other gentleman was talking about, then, then, you know, building without a permit becomes an option and, um, to save money and to get what you actually want. And then they stop trusting people because they're building without permits. And so the culture there is just, um, it, it depends on who you get that day. Uh, and that can derail your entire project. And, um, it's, uh, it, it is incredibly frustrating and it's scary and it's something that, you know, in, in our situation, we're, you know, considering whether to even engage them or not, you know? And that's just, that's, that, that, that's not, uh, serving the people. It's also, I did hear from somebody that they lived in Carmel and they, um, you know, it's a very different situation, but that they had experiences with their planning department that were incredibly helpful. And they really wanted to be teams with the, with, with the residents and they were, um, you know, they didn't feel adversarial. So, um, you know, finding out how Carmel does it, you know, um, could be really interesting and helpful and a, a good, um, resource that it's, it is just a, I mean, Santa Cruz County Plan Department doesn't trust the residents, basically. And, and that is, feels really unacceptable. And, um, uh, they're getting worse results because of that. You know, more things are being built illegally because they're, they're creating their own obstacles. So, um, I, I, I just
I completely agree with you. I mean, my, my parents live in a rural area too. We have neighbors that have built illegally for the, all the same reasons you just mentioned. So I agree, we need to get back to a place where the, the citizens, we as citizens can trust the planning department and vice versa.
Right.
I'm happy to work with you on any specific issues you're having. Um, I mean, like I said, we are turning the ship in the right direction. Um, I mean, I guess you mentioned it depends on what planner you get, on what, what day you go in. Um, you know, we are working towards having accountability for, um, I, I mentioned not only how fast all permits are getting processed and transparency on that, but also how fast each, each planner is helping to process those permits. So, I mean, bringing, bringing light into this, uh, train wreck of a situation. As well as, you know, you mentioned the helpful element, working with you element that, uh, your friend had experienced in Carmel. That's what we're trying to get with the Unified Permit Center as well, and that it's, you know, a one-stop shop where you actually have someone helping you through the process, rather than directing you to who you need to talk to next. And it's not really my problem. It's your problem because you're trying to build here and what, you know, why would you even want to do that in the first place? So, um, that's the, I, I agree with you. It's a huge problem. That's the culture shift we're trying to effectuate. And happy, you know, to, you know, my, my goal has been to track some specific permits through the process now to understand how things are, what things are catching people up. And again, use that as an opportunity to engage with our new director, say, hey, this is still a problem. What do we need to change this in the county code or in the way, um, you know, the, in the operational guidelines for the department? What do we need to do to get a better outcome? So I'm happy to work with you, uh, on your specific project too.
Wonderful. Thank you. Um, can I ask one more question? A different subject, which is about climate change and what our county is doing. Being a seaside, uh, community, uh, we're going to be on the front line soon. And, um, I feel as though trees are such a community resource that, um, when people take trees down, it actually affects everybody. And it's such a slow process. It's really hard to tell that. But, um, I feel really strongly that if someone takes a tree down, they should be required to put, to plant five. You know, that they, that a one tree coming down should actually affect the overall outcome in a positive way and in a long-term positive way. And I don't hear anybody talking about that. And it does, you know, what are we doing about climate change here? What are we doing if the sea rises a foot and we haven't even thought about it? Um, and what are we doing to create this being, to create Santa Cruz being a more, um, forested area that is well cared for and not a fire hazard, but, um, you know, is, is, uh, that we're creating a, a better biomass and, um, carbon sequestration, uh, area on the planet?
Great questions. Yeah, I mean, climate, climate change and the climate crisis is something that, uh, it's the reason that I got into local politics is because, uh, it's, you know, I fully believe that it's a crisis and want to be able to do everything I can to improve the situation. You know, 60% of our emissions come from transportation. Um, and that's why this, the, the point of, you know, when we talk about the sustainability update, um, we are talking about trying to make especially the urban area, um, have more, yeah, infill residential housing. Um, so that people do not have to commute from as far away, uh, and that people have more options when, um, to get around when they're doing that. So that's why we're investing in more like a pedestrian infrastructure and trying to improve the bus system as well. One policy I'm working on right now is that new housing, uh, has the option to fund metro-like a utility. So we get more people who basically are getting a bus pass every month and are, are that much more likely to take transit. That'll help us improve the headways, um, on all the major routes so that the bus is coming every 10 minutes or less rather than every 15, 30, 40 minutes like it is today. So that's, I mean, and that's a major part of how we can reduce our impact. I mean, certainly the sequestration stuff is really interesting as well. You, you know, the, the cut one tree down, plant five is, um, that's an interesting proposal that we could look more at. Of course, you know, you don't want to also get into the problem of adding more restrictions, right? And we're just talking about how every layer of restrictions, each idea in, in isolation sounds like a good, that sounds great. But when you add them all up, it becomes impossible to do anything. Maybe you don't have space to plant five trees. But I mean, it's worth looking into. And then of course, um, you know, all, all of the, um, work that's being done on sustainable agriculture right now and sequestering carbon in farmland, I think is really compelling. And we have, do have an opportunity, uh, given that agriculture is our, our top industry here in the county, um, to make progress on that as well. I, I mean, it's still, I would say, early days as far as that goes, but it's certainly something I'm working on. Uh, in terms of talking to folks who are trying to get those improved measuring devices into the hands of, uh, farmers and also getting some farmers to actually sign up to pilot projects in our county, um, and hopefully begin to change the culture and show the opportunity that way. And then, of course, we'd also need to identify some source of funds, uh, to incentivize people to start, um, practicing more sustainable agriculture and actually, you know, sequestering carbon, measuring the amount of carbon on their land today, and then how much they've sequestered in, you know, one, five, 10 years.
Thank you for thinking about that.
My pleasure. Becky?
Thank you. Thank you. I, I want to hear more discussion about, uh, the fire reorganization. That's a huge, huge issue here for this, this valley. And I'm not hearing much discussion about it. That, um, because I've, I've watched other fire districts reorganize. I'm concerned about this one. Why, why is it Scotts Valley? Why isn't it the city of Santa Cruz or a combination of them? Uh, why isn't Central weighing in on all this? And it's being pushed through at an incredibly fast rate. So I have a lot of concerns about the safety for the people in this valley and the expense that they're going to be asked to shoulder to keep a level of protection here. The vote, as these things go, is a weighted vote. I've, I've experienced that. So I don't think people are being told everything they need to know about this. A weighted vote on a possibly $1,000 per parcel assessment annually? And, and what will change? And how will that all be done? And when will that all be done? I really want you to have Joe Serrano talk. Maybe he's jumped off, but, um, I, I'm not hearing enough talk about that issue here tonight and it needs to happen.
Well, to be honest, Becky, it's not the forum. I mean, look, I deal with a lot of issues in the county, but education and fire are independent districts, right? I can't get into the details of how this very school is funded nor, and nor will I jump into the details of the fire district's business either. I mean, again, there was a fire district meeting on Tuesday night. That's the forum for it. So, you know, I think just high level, why, why Scotts Valley? Well, this, the fire district has had a relationship with Scotts Valley for the last, um, what is it? I mean, five, five, seven years, right? I mean, they've already been working together and, and, um, you know, I, I believe it's also probably the closest fire station, um, as well on the outside of Branson 40. So I mean, there's, you know, a lot of pretty good answers. I don't think the, um, you know, the, I, I don't believe that $1,000 has been validated either. I mean, the reason they're going out for a study is to get a sense of what it would actually cost. So, you know, that, I, I'm sorry, I'm not jumping into it more, but again, it's, it's just not my jurisdiction and I don't want to overstep my own bounds.
Okay, thank you. But as of the Board of Supervisors, you do have the ability to allocate some Proposition 172 Public Safety money to, uh, fire protection. Right now, none of that is happening. Would you be willing to, um, push to get some Prop 172 money to support vegetation projects that would benefit the entire county?
You know, the thing about money is when you take it, you put it somewhere, you've got to take it from somewhere else. And so you're actually, that proposal is great, but you have to defund the sheriff in order to get that. And our sheriff already has six open positions that are not funded. The whole arrangement around the, that proposition's funding really came down to negotiation at the time it was created. At the time, you know, the, the fire districts didn't ask for more. Um, and so, I mean, in theory, we could go back and renegotiate it, but it's, it's not going to be, you, you're going to have to take that money from someone. It's not just lying around. So, you know, if we got the feedback that people wanted to see left shirt, less services from the sheriff's department, more fire mitigation, we could have that conversation, but it's not just, you know, there for the taking.
But I just do want to point out that Measure G, the countywide half-cent sales tax passed in 2018 was supposed to fund fire. Zero of Measure G money has funded fire. A lot of it has funded law enforcement. And I'm not against funding law enforcement. I'm just saying that if you're going to sell something to the voters, like Prop 172 was sold to the voters and like, um, proposition, Measure G was sold to the voters. And now we've got Measure B coming up on the June thing ballot that is also saying they're going to fund fire. You know, we talk about accountability, but it, it looks to me like, um, a lot of these things are sold to the voters to fund fire, which we are all worried about. And it's not carried through on. So I, I want to hear you commit some money to fire projects. I want to hear you commit some Measure G money to fire project. That was the third use of the critical unmet needs that the voters were told it would fund and they have gotten zero, zero money. that the voters were told it would fund, and they have gotten zero, zero money from measure G. So we're all worried about fire. We're all rural dwellers here and it's not just a Happy Valley area problem. It is a countywide problem, a statewide area problem. So I hope that you will help fund vegetation management and defensible space projects this year. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I certainly agree with the need and that's why, um, I allocated $50,000 of discretionary funding to the Firewise groups, uh, which is leveraged to get more grant funding and, you know, get just more people, more neighborhoods involved in addressing the issue. Um, I'm happy to look at where, how and where we can get, I mean, more general fund revenue over to fire. But the big question we're going to have to, that I didn't want to know, what I'd like to know from you is where, whose budget do you want me to cut in order to get there? That's the hard question. Uh, I mean, uh, I mean, I would have, I can get the report if you'd like to see how, I mean, measure G is being spent. It goes into the general fund, right? And so the general fund is, I mean, funds all general county services, but including planning, which we've been talking about. And part of the problem is that planning has also has unfilled positions. So they just, I mean, the culture, yes, it's a problem, but they're also short staffed and the combination is not pretty, right? As I said, the sheriff's office has open position. We are, we are radically underfunded as a county. We're one of the poorest counties in the state. Only 13 cents of your property taxes go to the county. That was because of Prop 13, which we all appreciate, especially now with the rising prices, right, of, of homes. But Prop 13 really set in stone the proportion of our property taxes that the county gets. And it can't easily go beyond that. We're one of the lowest rates in the state. We only get 13 cents compared to Santa Clara County. They get 20 cents on the dollar. Um, and then moreover, more of our population lives in the unincorporated county. More of our, uh, our population is using the sheriff's office, planning, county fire, et cetera. And so, um, it's not an easy situation to solve. It's going to take changing state laws to really get enough money to do all the things we need to do, including better fire service, fixing county roads, filling these vacant sheriff's positions. It's, I, you know, I wish I had better news, but it's, it's going to take more collaborative action and changing some state laws as well to get the, the money that we need. And that's why when a sales tax like measure G passes, it's not all just, you know, oh, we have, uh, tons of money to go towards, um, clearing all the county roads is, you know, with, uh, eight foot setback for, for fire safety. It's because, um, they're just on such a tight budget. So again, happy to look at how we can get the money to do that. Um, but it could involve some cuts and it could, I mean, and we also need to look at how we can just get more money in general from the state.
Supervisor?
I'll go online and then Joe.
Hi, I'm Susan Tontowie-Darcy. I'm not part of Happy Valley, but I'm part of North Rodeo Gulch and I'm the Firewise lead, um, there. And I wanted to just talk about the fire because you just mentioned fire and I know it's not, um, Manu's district to handle that, but he is going to be our head, one of our big speakers at our event. We're having an event on Saturday, April 23rd from 10 to 1 o'clock. It's, you know, not this Saturday, the following Saturday. We've got 15 speakers. So those people who are interested in fire, and I know we all are, I'm in the same area that you are. I'm in North Rodeo Gulch, which is right next door to Happy Valley. We've got tons of, we've got 260 houses up here. We are a Firewise community and we're making a difference. And one of the things I, I'd like to see, because I kind of feel just listening in, I was invited to come listen in today. Um, and I feel like there's a lot of blame going on and it's, it's, it's heated and there's a lot of anger and concerns that everybody has and I, I feel the same way, but I feel that, um, that if we work together and, and, and try to figure out how to solve these problems, not just look for handouts, and I don't want to call them handouts because I know that's a controversial thing, but, it kind of reminds me of President Kennedy, you know, when he looked at the country and just said, hey, you know, instead of asking what the country can do for you, what can you do for us? And I've spent the past two years working on building like Firewise community and we have done a phenomenal job getting, reducing fuels, getting Marco, Mac, and the whole central fire department working with us to, um, to build this whole, this whole canyon, trying to figure out how we're going to get fire breaks in there. We're working on signage. We're working on, um, putting together, um, infrastructure for communication with MERS and ham radios. It's remarkable. We just did this incredible test with what 15 or 20 different ham radios, but we're able to communicate. So, um, what I like to do is be positive about this and use our, use the people, you know, so if we're all concerned about fire, let's solve the problem. So if we're worried about looking at communication, we're looking at fire breaks, we're looking at roads, we're looking at all these different things. We, we as a community, and we all have money, you know, we all, we're in, we're in good shape. We can take care of these things and work as a team. I feel like we can get a lot more done. Um, and, and that's what I'm hoping some, if, if you're interested, come join us. We're going to be doing this huge event. I've got, um, you know, Manu's going to open our speak, speech. We've got the OR three and the EOC coming. I've got, um, Hams MERS people. I've got, um, Aries from the ham radio. I've got, um, the Live Oak Cert people coming, Marco Mac. We're talking about signage and, um, my daughter's an ER doctor. She's going to be talking about what happens when you're leaving your house, you know, what to do. And I never thought about this, like what kind of clothing, what you're breathing, what kind of shoes you should be wearing. Just things that are really important for all of us to know and for us to share with other people so that we can protect ourselves. Whether we're evacuating, whether we're sheltering in place, and we're going to be addressing both of those. Marco and I are teaching a class called evacuation smarts, which everybody on Happy Valley can definitely benefit from. And I think you'd really be, you'd appreciate what we're doing. We're not done, but we're working on it. I've got the sheriff coming from, and he's going to be talking about zone haven. They've changed all the zoning. So we need to know, you know, what our zone is, you know, that's, it's important. They'll be discussing that. I've got Cal Fire coming, talking about, uh, fire breaks. I'm hoping to talk about horns and sirens. If you know anything about that, please email me privately later because I'm going to get a siren that I want to set off at the event. So if you hear a siren up in Happy Valley, you're going to know what that means because we need to improve communication. We've got, uh, road associations coming to talk about the great work they've done, which amazingly, one group does a, a project. All of the roads start doing, it's like keeping up with the Joneses, but it's all helping each other because we're all reducing our fuel. And I've got equine evacuation, which you also have up in Happy Valley. They're going to talk about that. And I've got a student who's got a side deck who's created the solution. So, you know, and we're also going to do a fire extinguisher demo and we're going to do a chainsaw demo. And I've got 15 vendors with all kinds of really innovative things that can help us save our lives. So, so that's what I want to put the energy towards is, is looking at solutions, working as a team. And then we're North Rodeo Gulch. We're right next to Happy Valley. So I do want to work with all of you to communicate. So if fire is really a concern, please come or contact me so we can work together to solve these things. The government is, is like Manu said, that there's very little money there and they're doing everything they can. And like you said, if he's going to have to take money from here to put it over here. I mean, that, that's, that's not where we really want to go. We, we really need to solve this. And if we wait for the government to come with millions of dollars to solve all of our problems, um, we're not going to have properties. I mean, all of our homes are our, our biggest investments and we don't have time to wait for that. So if we all work on creating fire breaks and Cal Fire is going to help me figure out where to put these breaks. I'd love to look at the fire shed between Happy Valley and North Rodeo Gulch. We've got a great area that we can get, you know, just roll up your sleeves and let's come. I just bought a chainsaw in the day, a little 10 inch chainsaw with a battery and I'm going to demonstrate that at the event. Because I've got Frank, who's this big burly guy who's going to do that. I said, you know what? These people are old and they are afraid and there's women. And I said, but I'm going to go out there. I weigh 120 pounds and I'm going to pull out my chainsaw and I'm going to show people. So anyhow, I just, I really appreciate what Manu's doing. I appreciate all of you. I know your concerns. I have the same thing. That's what I've done. I put in 15 to 20 hours a week to run my Firewise program and I just want you to know that we can do this. So let's join, let's join forces and be positive.
Thank you.
I'm done. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Thank you for the positive. Thank you for the positive message. And yes, I look forward to your event on, uh, April 23rd and, and seeing the chainsaw demonstration that you have for us.
And we all look forward to having you come.
I think we have one more question from Joe. Okay, sure. You, then Joe, and then we'll,
Okay, hi. Thanks. Thanks for holding this event today. Um, we live, we live about probably less than a mile from here and live in a, a digital vacuum. I was wondering, what's a practical way for us to get broadband up Granite Creek Road?
I, I think we should look into, well, the,
You, you talked about the last mile, middle mile. How, how does that work?
So with the broadband master plan, we'll see if it would actually make sense to run a fiber line up Granite Creek Road.
Right.
If, if the, you know, whatever, uh, customer base, residential base is there. Um, if not that option, then I think trying to get some level of line of sight to you guys. I mean, do you have any click? No.
Not really. A lot of people don't.
Right.
We could never attend this meeting via Zoom.
Right. Yeah. We're, we're less than a mile from here and it's like, we have 1990s technology.
Right.
This whole area.
Yeah. I don't know how people, like Carl, how about you?
I'm good because I'm a liar.
Okay. But yeah, I mean, we don't, I, I, if I want to make a call, talk on my cell phone, I got to drive up to Scotts Valley. You know?
Right.
I mean, it's, it's not a huge complaint. It's just not, you know, modern life.
Yeah, it is. It is extremely challenging. Uh, I mean, we'll do the, the economic analysis essentially as if with, do we have enough money to get to your house? Right? Um, it, you do live in an extremely challenging area to get effective broadband for those reasons. Because the, you know, as you said, you don't have the line of sight and it's, I mean, some of those roads can get pretty long.
Right. I talked to Comcast. It was like, oh yeah, we can do it for 12 grand a parcel and then top to move six months. It was 60 grand. And then I just gave up.
Yeah.
So is there a practical way that the people who live up Granite Creek Road can, can come into this century?
Um, I mean, we'll, we'll do an analysis and if there's a way to get there, we will.
Yeah. And the broadband master plan does have, um, a gap analysis in which are identifying areas such as the communities in Live Oak as well as in Summit, um, that are either underserved or unserved, um, with regards to broadband. Like, you know, that access point. Um, when, uh, I was reading through it, it did mention that, um, the individual or the applicant who is awarded the RFP will be tasked with identifying solutions to deliver broadband to rural and mountainous areas of the county. So that is one of the things that is included in the master plan. So, so that is one thing that they're going to have to be looking into.
Yeah, that is, it's absolutely a goal to improve connectivity.
Is there anything practical I can do to expedite that?
I mean, um, we can also write to the middle mile, uh, email at the state to try to get us more money and I'm happy to do so as well. Um, why don't we do, what, you know what? How about I, I'll pull a list of all the folks who live off of Granite Creek Road. We'll get a total number just of residences there. Um, and I'll have you to draft a letter, um, advocating for that as a,
I had rallied the troops, you know, so to speak, for the Comcast effort.
Yep.
Until the November got to Ohio.
I hear you.
But I think that keeps happening in our region where people try to work with Comcast because I know that there are, the city limit from our house is like a mile. So Comcast goes to that mile, but to bring it down, down into the valley a little more. They say it costs a certain amount, but see, that's why I don't understand is like, when you say bring broadband, does that mean like fun Comcast to bring it or is it a different outfit?
Potentially, yeah. Basically what happened is that was, like I said, there's $10 million that's going to come into the county. And we can then turn around and issue, we'll issue an RFP request for proposals, um, saying, okay, who can get to the most underserved areas with this money? And so that might be Comcast. It might be Cruz AO. It might be, you know, anyone who is in the business. And because ultimately, you know, they're going to use, they're going to leverage the public money to get to you. And then of course, the benefit for their business is the ongoing subscription value. So they'll, and they'll put in some amount of their own money, you know, to make it work for the business case of it. Um, and so that's
and I believe it's really hard to contact everyone. But sometimes you would, you would get on this really large email list.
Yep.
And this is before.
Yep.
But anyway, it just seems like almost everyone would want to have it. I don't know why anyone wouldn't. And, and the more people, of course, you can get, the more cost effective. But it's just, it's just finding everyone.
Right.
That's what it is. And then it's like, I always see that, you know, I, we're on, you know, next door in our valley. We have our own group and I always see little pieces of people reaching out to your office or doing things to try to get it. And then it just dies because of Comcast.
Yeah.
Makes the cost outrageously high.
Right. Yeah. Okay. So I'm, I'm happy to do what I can, which would be, um, you know, can go to the tax collector, pull a list of all the addresses off of Granite Creek Road and say, okay, whatever, we got 755 homes here. Um, and use that to, to advocate on, uh, this part of the district's behalf with the folks at the state who might allocate additional funding. Uh, the other thing I can do is go to the, um, can leverage the voter rolls for any official government purpose. Um, and happy to use that to send a message to, an email to everyone whose email address I have saying, we're trying to organize to get better internet in this area. Um, and, you know, if you want to, you know, he, here's a link where you can help, where you can advocate directly and we could form some, how, uh, sign on some kind of group perform for the area, um, to continue to advocate and, and create a group.
Good luck getting a permit.
If there's, if there's state funding involved, you'll be expedited. That's right. Okay. I think we had one last question here.
All right. First I want to say, I just, I, I'm amazed and, and heartened that you're willing to try to balance all these competing interests that, uh, that you're faced all the time. And I think it's an amazing, it's an amazing job to take on and, uh, thank you for that. Um, uh, I read a long article recently talking about how all the federal funds for COVID relief were, uh, allocated across the country. And it turns out that about 60% went to law enforcement, um, which is sort of like jaw dropping. Uh, given, there's a few other things involved with COVID besides, uh, police. Um, and, uh, I know that you're, the people that, that pull at you for money, um, are often very organized and very entrenched. And, you know, I mean, the, the bureaucrats that you work around make about 10 times as much per year as I ever made at, at the most profitable part of my business. Um, but, uh, I have a specific question about law enforcement because I think that that's per your, your purview to some extent. I've got a friend who lives in Santa Cruz Gardens. She's lived there for 30 years. And her adult children, she has an adult child who walks home from work. Twice he's been accosted by law enforcement. He were, he's a private, uh, private watchman, private security, wearing his uniform. Uh, the police have come and hassled him. Said, can I pat you down? And he did not, he didn't want to be patted down. He was just walking home after a 13 hour shift.
Right.
Um, if that happened once, I'd be sort of amazed and, and alarmed. The fact that it happened twice is really kind of disturbing. I've tried to figure out who to call to find out who did it. Uh, it wasn't the sheriff. It apparently was the CHP, although it doesn't make sense that they'd be up there. But my question is, um, with all this money that's going to law enforcement, is this really the kind of priorities we want to have where I, if I was a supervisor, I'd be calling law enforcement and having them call the woman who complained and telling her to chill out a little bit. Um, but I just, I, I, I wonder how you feel about, um, you know, law enforcement overall. Are you hearing this kind of report where this random, I mean, we're not talking about DUI stops. We're talking about, uh, you know, a guy in their twenties, thirties walking home.
Yep.
Um, not prowling, not looking, but walking home. And I just wonder how law enforcement has the funds and time to do that kind of stuff.
I wonder that as well. Um, like, like I said, we, you know, law enforcement in our county, we is understaffed in general. Um, I'm, I mean, happy to talk to your friend and see, get more details. I don't know if it is. CHP is not directly under my jurisdiction, but you know, the sheriff's budget certainly is. Um, and I'm happy to talk to him about our, you know, operating procedures. And I mean, if it, we shouldn't be stopping people on the street to pat them down. They're clearly not a threat to the neighborhood. I mean, I want to address the other thing you brought up, which was, um, this, the idea that the American Rescue Plan and COVID funding went 60% to law enforcement. Um, I don't know what it looked like, uh, nationwide, but certainly not, that didn't happen here in our county. Uh, the majority of the funds went towards food, um, which is, and, and shelter. And of course, the medical, the, and human services and health services. Um, I'm, no, I, I can confidently say that a significant portion did not go to law enforcement. And I mean, it's, the challenge around that is, And I mean, it, the challenge around that is that some of our costs are, may not be reimbursed by, uh, by FEMA, particularly for food. And so, um, it's kind of left the county picking up the bill for around $7 million of, uh, unrefunded costs. But, um, yeah, it didn't go, didn't go to the sheriff.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, well, I think that's all we've got time for tonight. I'm happy to stick around and talk to you, uh, to anyone one-on-one for a little bit longer. Um, and next month we'll be in Prospect Heights at Daylovi. Great. All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Yeah, good night.